Children's book Marvelous Marvin's Magical Moment. At Emporium 406, you'll also find a full line of Made in Montana products and home decor. Items such as painted windows, barn wood and tin goods, fleece blankets, designer pillows, jewelry, small furniture, and so much more. Emporium 406 at 23 South Idaho Street, Dylan's premier Made in Montana gift store. I'm Ron Carroll, owner of Emporium 406, where you'll find unique vintage and contemporary goods. Products like autographed celebrity memorabilia and framed vintage posters. We also have a magic shop, where you'll find the new children's book Marvelous Marvin's Magical Moment. At Emporium 406, you'll also find a full line of Made in Montana products and home decor. Items such as painted windows, barn wood and tin goods, fleece blankets, designer pillows, jewelry, small furniture, and so much more. Emporium 406 at 23 South Idaho Street, Dylan's premier Made in Montana gift store. I'm Ron Carroll, owner of Emporium 406, where you'll find unique vintage and contemporary goods. Products like autographed celebrity memorabilia and framed vintage posters. We also have a magic shop, where you'll find the new children's book Marvelous-
How about BJ Lee's- The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you all. First item on the agenda is minutes.
Move to approve all three.
Second. Good move by Bill, seconded by Russ. Discussion?
Parliamentary asked to approve each one individually. I had comments on each one.
Well, you can just make comments on it now, on each three. Is that a motion? Did you make a motion to separate the minute?
Well, it's kind of going pretty fast, but if you'll take it, sure.
I'll take a motion, looking for a second. Second call for a second. Third and last call for a second. Hearing no seconds. The three approval for the minutes, three minutes go together. We will take input for each one of them.
Page four, August 5th.
The hearing or the meeting?
I'm in the meeting page.
Okay, page four. Okay?
We're gonna zoom all the way down to line number four. The word is "help," not "heal." I wish it must have hit a board. Amen, but it's not gonna hit. Not enough big enough Band-Aids or body suits.
Any other corrections?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Again, these minutes are reconsidered from past meeting. The reason, principal reason was that I had asked that item four of the July 5th minutes show that I had made an assertion of an ADA reasonable accommodation claim. They did not show that and also reflect the personal nature that you had allowed Mr. Graham's comments directed towards me and continued use of Zoom.
Will you, will you want to do a motion?
Item F on-
Public comment. August 5th, public comment.
And, um, I would request-
On the last meeting, I wasn't here, but I was told that you wanted like verbatim saying that he attacked, and I don't remember-
I never requested that. I never requested that. I asked that the minutes, in summary, show that I had made the ADA reasonable accommodation claim once again, and that Mr. Graham's comments in regards to continued use of Zoom were directed personally at me and were allowed by you.
Allowed by me? First of all, I did not take that as an attack.
As you have been well advised, who advised all of us previously, we can't make a personal attack against-
And I didn't, and I did not take that as a personal attack. He was asking to cancel Zoom and have that discussion.
His indictment was directed personally by name at me.
He never said your, he never said your name.
He did.
No.
Listen to the tape, Mr. Mayor, he did.
Well, do I ever hear a motion to change it? Well, hearing no motions is not getting changed.
Okay, also on the August, does anyone else, are we off of the August 5th minutes?
Well, we can go on, yeah, August 9th.
All right. Then we're ready to discuss the August 19th minutes. The 19th minutes, as far as the special meeting, have numerous omissions in terms of my comments during that meeting, and I don't know how to repair that, so obviously that has its lies. The regular meeting of August 19th, again, Mr. Graham's comments, which were numerous in that meeting, under item C2, were directed personally at me, Mr. Ham allowed them, and I would like that shown in the record.
Well, first off, let me respond to the public hearing. I know when you start listening to the recordings, it gets really tough, and the line means she could not understand what you said. So if you can fill them in, this is the time to do it, because if there's another line there, she, whoever's doing the business cannot understand, and this one was Stacy, and he could not understand what you said on the recording.
Well, okay, first of all, if you look at the minutes, there's so many lines indicated for me that I wouldn't know where to start. Second of all, if that's the case, she's certainly willing, if she's having understanding problems for Zoom, I guess that's an issue overall, since I was on Zoom, but irrespective of that, just pick up the phone and we can sort it out by phone possibly, something constructive anyway.
I'm not understanding during the meeting, call you up?
Oh, when she's doing the minutes, to use this as an example, Mr. Mayor, the special meeting minutes, I don't know, do you want me to tell them? The underlying issues as far as, and it's simply a problem with me, not anybody else, so I have to assume that she's having a problem understanding me through Zoom, which is an issue overall that needs to be attended to. But all those items could have been handled at the point that that became a difficulty and just simply pick up the phone and we can sort it out.
And we can do that tonight, and I can't help it that you can't remember, and I have no understanding that you would remember then, which you'll go.
When she's going, when she's going over properly, not to-
It's usually the weak-
The end. When she's putting together the minutes, which is done properly, as I understand it right after the meeting, my memory would be fresh, she would be able to, rather than just a simple underline, say what she's hearing and what she's not understanding, and I could possibly assist, but the overall problem with Zoom, again, I point out, though you apparently have no feelings of importance as far as that issue goes.
So I'm taking, right now, I'm taking that as an attack, so would you please stop that? You sat there, you were actually telling me personally that I had done this wrong. I had done everything that I can to make Zoom better.
Can I address that?
And I can't, I can't help it that you maybe don't understand how to talk on Zoom, okay?
Oh, really? So the problem is me?
Well, it seems like you're the only one that we can't hear on the recording properly. We're not trying to do anything to you.
I'm the one specifically on Zoom, Mr. Mayor, and specific to this meeting, I'm the only one participating on Zoom.
Okay, well, that will be talked about later.
Hopefully.
It will be talked about.
And we move on to the August 19th, right in the meeting?
Yeah, now, I was not at that one, so I cannot answer, was it a personal attack?
Okay. Again, the meeting minutes do not show the personal nature of Mr. Graham's comments towards me, which they were directed personally to me by name, and expressions by name, and that these were allowed by, in your absence, Mr. Ham.
So is there a motion to change the minutes some way?
Yes. Again, I'd like, I'd like those minutes to show the personal nature of Mr. Graham's comments, that they were directed specifically at me, and that Mr. Ham allowed those comments to be made.
Is there a second to it? Second call for a second. Third and last call for a second. Hearing none, motion not accepted. Is there any other corrections on it?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Is it possible, just to make sure that we have the record correct, that Mr. Wasselby afforded a, I mean, I think I have a couple in my purse, a zip drive with the audio of the August 19th public hearing, and then he could listen to it at home and fill in the blanks, and then he might be able to have a more acceptable record of the public hearing and be able to prove that at next month's or at the next meeting.
Thank you, thank you, Councilman O'Rourke. I already have a zip drive with copies of the last three council meetings.
Great.
Including the special meeting.
Great, and are those easy to listen to at home?
They're not being listened to by me at the moment, they're being listened to by someone else.
This would require you to listen to it, because then you could fill in the blanks.
Well, the easiest communication device, Councilman O'Rourke, that I can suggest again, would not be for me to listen to the tape and try to read the mind of the other listener, namely Stacy or Diana, and where they might be having issues of understanding me through Zoom or anyone else through Zoom. I can't read minds, so.
I don't understand the statement you just made. So you can't understand your own mind, since you're the one that made the statement?
No. To the, the, I have a pretty good idea of what's on the tape. The other listener's mind, namely Diana, or when they're trying, now, if they have been listening to that tape, then they can summarize those, and or see anyone else that's affected like this through Zoom, they're time understanding you through Zoom, here's our issue, and I could address those probably without even having to go to the tape.
Rich, this is Diana. We spend hours, we don't do them promptly after the meeting, we do them as we have time throughout the next week or two weeks. I mean, because we're working on minutes, and then we have to go to other jobs, then we come back to the minutes, it's back and forth for hours. So to call you when we have issues is really difficult and time consuming, that we don't have.
Whatever, let's move on.
Okay, is there any other corrections for August 19th, 2020 meeting?
Call for the question.
Question's been called for, to approve the August 5th, 2020 regular meeting minutes, the August 19th, 2020 public hearing minutes for the budget, and the August 19th regular meeting minutes. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Hearing only one nay, which I will report as Rich, and the rest of them are ayes, the motion passed. Mr. Mayor, with the hustle, we are organizing your mayor's report, so that the representative of the public can get on his way along. Now, what we can do is, let's do two things. First, let's move the library right up to the front, and then we'll move down right up after that. I agree with you on that. So right now, it's library.
She's getting an education, it's a different.
And there's minutes in here for you.
Yes.
You sure you want that kind of education? Anything you want to say, or? You might have to turn it on, I can't remember if you turned it on.
There's a microphone there.
Or there's one right by you, if you want.
So you, we have to approve the minutes before seeing things?
Move to approve the July 29th meeting minutes.
Second. Good move by Dan, seconded by Russ.
Call for the question.
Question's been called for, to accept the July 29th, 2020 meeting minutes at the library. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. I take that unanimously. Lori, anything you say?
Sure, we're starting up Storytime again, and we're gonna see how it goes. It will be outside, as long as the weather is good, social distance, all kind of fun stuff, but we've got a lot of requests from our patrons and our families, that they would like to see Storytime and Books and Babies started up again. So that will start tomorrow with Books and Babies. Jessica Kidd is gonna come in, and she's going to do the morning, and then I'll do the afternoon after school kids. And census week is coming, and the information that I got back last week was that Beaufort County is at 29%. And so the library is trying to do a census week at the library, and we're going to have some fun events, and people that come in and do their census questionnaire with us will be able to put their name into a hat for daily drawings and things like that. We hope that everybody can get out, because that really helps fund our library and our streets and things. So that will be the week of the 21st of September. We're working with some other organizations within town to bring other events to those organizations regarding census, and hopefully we can get more people, they can call the library if they have questions, that kind of thing, so that's definitely out there. And then we have Band Book Week is right after that, it's the week of the 27th, and we will be having some activities that week. We are going to do our Band Book Jail again, because you're in jail by yourself, so we can do it that way, and people can call in and pledge, so if anybody would like to sit in jail for 30 minutes, we would love to have you down, and call your friends to help us support the library. And we have also Pint Night, October 1st, Four Band Book Week, also at the brewery, they're going to do Pint Night with us, and it's gonna be Trivia Night, because it is on Thursday, so it will be some fun library trivia, as well as other fun trivia, not just library, but it'll be other fun trivia, so come down and support the library there. Do you guys have, oh, book clubs next week on the 8th. Do you guys have any questions?
Thank you.
Can she say something? She was wondering.
And we're also making friendship bracelets at the library.
That's what she's working on. So we have kits that people can come and get, and they just look online at our webpage, and there's kits that they can request, and they can make things.
All right.
Yeah. So, thank you all.
Thank you. Now we'll move, item number two on the mayor's report, or no, item number three, sorry, up to the front. This has to do with the engineering agreement addition for the Idaho Street improvements. We have Kevin Johnson here in the audience, he was down here going over a lot of the water stuff today, water crossing, trying to get a lot of that stuff, getting done, to get the engineers. So, this was added to the agenda, is it sort of time sensitive to get this going, if you guys want Idaho Street repaired? Move to approve. Second. Good move by Bill, seconded by Russ. Discussion.
Where is Mr. Johnson?
He's in the audience.
Is he gonna make a presentation or not?
Well, he's more here to just answer questions, if there's any questions. He did his presentation last time, I'm not sure if much changed. I think the biggest question that I got, from glancing over there, was the sidewalks, and we went and walked down the street again today, and we maybe have him talk a little bit about what he found on sidewalks, but the sidewalks are not in, aside from the handicap ADA intersections, that's the only thing that's planned on being repaired or replaced.
Over. Is he gonna make any comment on the investigation as far as the sidewalks?
I'm happy to hear if you want me to.
Sure.
Kevin Johnson went down, project manager for the water project that has evolved into a street project. With respect to this project, as we described, it's kind of within the slash curb to curb is the scope of the project, storm drainage improvements, ADA ramp improvements, it does not involve building to building sidewalk replacement, that in my opinion is unnecessary for 80-plus percent of that. There will be portions of the non-existent places where there's no curb, no sidewalk there, where we'll need to do some work, it'll delineate on the drawing so that we can make a match. So what it'll look like is a lot like Glendale, as you go around the corners, and where it ties into what, there's no curb there previously, but when they did the ADA corners on Glendale, you go around the corner, and then it matches into the sidewalk, essentially, there's no curb there. So that's the scope of the project, that's a pretty significant additional amount of work and disruption to bite off. Our opinion is to not mess with the sidewalks, and our request is to not add it into this project at this time, and I think we can make the project successful without turning over another major can of worms, if you started getting near the buildings and opening up what's underneath there. Fortunately, the vast majority are actually in pretty good shape, they're draining away from the buildings effectively, and we just need to make the curbs flow, there'll be additional inlets to capture the storm drainage and get it out of the street, so that's the ultimate goal. Every street project becomes a drainage project, to get that out of the streets.
Couple of questions, Mr. Johnson?
You got it.
First of all, from our last visit when you were here, let me try to summarize and tell me if I'm in error on any of this in terms of your memory. Your engagement, you made clear the last time that your engagement was simply, insofar as the Idaho Street portion of the project, that it was simply to engineer the underground improvements, basically from Orr to, I guess, Helena, and then in the four block area where the pavement was being, and the base was being changed, that you, that your engagement included that work, and the ADA cornering at those affected intersections in the, in basically that four block area. Is that correct?
Not exactly, the entire project initial scope that's approved to date is entirely related to the water.
No, no, I'm, I'm asking you to segment out just the Idaho Street portion of your engagement.
So that would be the water main replacement within Idaho?
The underground infrastructure, correct.
That's correct.
And so is that summary that I just stated, is that essentially correct, as far as your engagement?
Right now, no, his engagement, right now, without passing this engineering agreement, is to just replace the water line down the center, not the center, but down the street of Idaho Street, from Virginia Street down to Greer, or no, Orr, sorry, Orr, sorry. That's all his engagement is right now. And then Washington Street, and then the River Crossing.
Correct.
Okay, let me restate your last visit, then. With this amendment, your engagement would include what I just stated, correct?
Yeah, would include replacing, rebuilding the concrete, replacing, rebuilding the street, rebuilding the ADA ramp cell, corners included.
Okay, that's in essence what I just stated.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so, so what I'm getting at is, in our last get-together, it was clear that your engagement did not include the curbs and gutters and sidewalks, other than ADA, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and you made that very clear. And particularly Councilman the Hand was clear in stating that as far as financing and budgeting, the horses were headed in possibly the direction of including sidewalks. And you made it clear that your engagement didn't include that, and that- And that if that was the case, then you would have to do a lot of thinking cap stuff as to your overall engagement and/or the cost of it, correct?
That's accurate, yes.
And Mr. Hand was, I can't say incorrect, is misled, I, it was incorrect. And I told Mr. Hand the wrong stuff. I believed the sidewalks were included. What I read on the number, my glance pass, and it was like 4,800 square feet and I thought, oh, that will cover the whole, both sides. Well, not square feet. I was thinking linear feet and I read it wrong and I told him wrong. So that was mine, informing Mr. Hand incorrectly. And that's what happened.
Okay, so none of our horses and our funding at the current moment are headed in the direction of including now or in the future sidewalks in this overall contract. Is that correct?
That is correct.
That's correct.
Okay, then I simply want to state that as I stated in the Streets Analysis Meeting, I've had discussions with a couple of engineers, principally the Director of the Butte Region for MDOT. And based on my experience, and he confirmed that in terms of his own personal experience and institutional memory of MDOT in regards to several projects which he listed that were similar in terms of buildings being old and multi-storied and fairly close to the project. He suggested two things that would help. One was doing a property survey before we do anything. Potentially five, seven, eight thousand bucks maybe to do that, but it would be well spent in that it would set a baseline for all of the issues that potentially could crop up in terms of, hopefully, now that the sidewalks aren't included, not encroaching on any foundation issues directly with associated buildings. But equally important, many of those buildings have structural stone foundations, century-old or older. Assuming so, their ground situations might not be perfect, might even be discolored. And so we go even just doing the streets themselves and a bunch of ivy rammers working all day out there compacting the base. And we might have people claiming that they've got cracks and settlement, whatever issues. So the property survey was suggested as a way around that, to set up a base. So, but anything that we do cause, well, then that'll show based on comparison to that property survey. But anything that pre-existed, we won't be responsible for. The other thing that he suggested was because of a lack of ass builds for what's going to be encountered out there. And I guess in particular, I'm focusing on the ADA corners of the intersections and sidewalks. We are going to be coming... Would it be fair to say we're going to foot, foot and a half potentially of the corners of those buildings? Mr. Johnson?
I don't know exactly how close we'll be. In some cases, there's just a number of panels that have to come out to transition from the ramp to the sidewalk. So that'll require cutting. It won't necessarily require jackhammering, but yeah, there'll be...
But would there's old issues, faults or whatever that are in those areas, rather than encountering them and then figuring out a way to deal probably expensively with them at that point? Would be, in your opinion, would his second suggestion be well advised to do a ground penetrate radar of the entire project site?
No.
No, okay. Does Warner do on record for that?
Still no.
Pardon me?
What? Oh, I didn't...
Mary Jo.
My question was, so we're going to do from Helena Street to Glendale and the intervening, the ADA ramps on the intersections. Okay, and then from Glendale to Orr will just be from curb to curb, correct?
No.
Oh, just the water line.
From Helena to Glendale will be the total street removal and replacement. So they're going to remove all the concrete there. From Glendale downward will just be the water line. So they'll make a cut, I can't remember how wide, what was it, 10, 12?
By a dime or then.
You know.
So it'll be 10 were cut and then, and repaired?
Yes.
Okay. And, and the curbs and the gutters?
All stay just like they are.
Or if they are.
If they are, yes.
Which they're not, but that's okay.
I have one last question, Mr. Johnson. What's the timeline on this and what, how much time do we have?
We, in our July 17 letter, with the scope of work you're looking at, we requested to be able to proceed within the first week of August. So we're, right now, I have surveyors scheduled, assuming this is approved tonight. I have them scheduled to be out next week to do some additional survey. That's not part of the street work. And I was also hoping that they would be able to do that in one trip and pick up the additional survey for the street project. So that's the most immediate schedule is I have them on tap to be here next week to get this all in motion as well as pick up some property survey and need for easements on the other side of the interstate. I think we have time to get this all rolled in, but we don't have time to delay any further.
So your, your original indication that we needed to do it by the first week of August, we're a month out obviously from that. Was that incorrect and we're still okay with on the timeline or not?
I, I think we're still okay on timeline. You know, as I said last time I was here, we can absorb a certain amount of schedule compression. What I can't control is we have to do a lot of coordination with the Department of Transportation on the stormwater-related items. I don't know how long that process might take. That would be in my mind a critical path. There's also, I don't know how much involved in the DEQ is going to have with the stormwater. We're open to submit the DEQ on the water part of the project here within the next two months. And I don't know if this would actually delay that. If it would, we'd probably just submit it separately later. So I, I think we're still good, but we're starting to push the envelope here as far as what ultimately pushes is the bid date and we don't want the bid date to push very far.
Well, are you indicating you need agreement tonight or?
Yes.
Push two weeks from now or what?
I think we need agreement tonight.
You need agreement tonight?
Yeah.
Okay. Mr. Mayor?
Yeah?
May I be allowed a little leeway here?
As in what you're going to do. So I'm not going to promise that, but I'll let you start talking.
Well, in good faith, whatever good faith exists between us, can we try ahead in that direction? I don't know about everybody else, but I'm getting a little tired and frustrated with, and it's not the mayor's fault, it's not my fault, and it's not Councilman Hand's fault. It's not any individual's fault, but we've got some process problems in the city. Because we continually get into situations at meetings where, and in this instance, it's the Idaho Street project. But later on in our agenda, it's going to be the budget. Where we are essentially converted into a rubber stamp body. And given the, given the option of either agree or bad things will happen. And from a timeline, I think we can do a lot better than that. And as far as the budget process in particular, which I'll take up if you'd like separately with the budget process when that comes up.
That's good.
But I think we need to look at how we, how we end up in these situations where we have to decide immediately or bad things will happen and figure out some correction for that.
And we'll bring that up and at that point you and I will have a discussion. But not right now, it's not the subject we're on.
The reason I'm bringing it up, Mayor, is because the Idaho Street project is symptomatic of the overall problem.
That was your opinion right here. I can pause for the question. Question's been called for to approve the engineering agreement addition for Idaho Street improvements without. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. I take that as unanimous. I'll be signing it. I'll be later tonight. Mail it to you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Thank you. You're welcome to stay and enjoy the party.
You might need a treat.
She did go somewhere.
No, we go or no.
I don't have any teeth left. I have one, thank you, but... Okay, next item. You guys want to go into discussing amending the council rules procedure for remote access?
Yes.
Okay, on that subject, this was myself. I approached Mr. Dolan that we wanted, we thought it would be a good idea to put it in because right now our council procedures do not allow electronic communication in a meeting, any votes. And so I thought it'd be best to cover our bottoms to have that in there if we can. That's all up to you guys though to add it. But, and so I had Mr. Dolan write us up something and I had a little help in it, but most of it was Mr. Dolan. I appreciate him trying to do this. This will add it onto here to try to cover like right now the COVID-19 thing that's going on, but some other things too. And it's up to you guys if you want to amend your rule of procedure to add this or not.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to have a motion to approve an amended version of what was given to us. And I'm happy to read that amended version to you. The amended...
How much, how much amended?
Not much, not much. It's easy.
Well, why don't we, let's do it this way. Let's make a motion to approve it and then go in and make motions to amend. Make a term of approval. How's that?
I think it's so interesting.
Okay, it's been moved by Russ, seconded by Bill. Now make a motion on how to put the change.
Okay, I, the, I do have some thoughts about the process, but I'm willing to let those go. If we could get down to number one and we would, under A, we would include an emergency exists such as a declared national comma, state comma, and/or municipal emergency or natural disaster and/or public health crisis, which prevents council members from attending in person. Strike and immediate action is needed. Go back and include emergencies. Emergency situations shall be declared ended upon the occurrence of, and we need to fill that in. We would go on to strike.
Well, let's just do that one first.
Oh, I think that you need to look at my whole thing in, as a whole.
You're making it off of big pieces too?
No, no, I promise you it'll be easy. If we strike B, C, and D completely, delete B, C, and D. We go on to number two, procedures and guidelines, and it just, that is just a procedure whereby the mayor approves somebody who requests to dial in remotely and I think that's kind of tedious, but it's, if you want to do that, great. And so the rest of it could remain the same. But what I'm trying to impress here is that I agree it is terribly important that we are here and that we're face to face and that we discuss things openly and that only in the most emergency of situations. And not because we need a quorum and not because we think some project needs to be dealt with that night. It is only when there is a grave national, state, or local emergency whereby somebody needs to zoom in. Otherwise, you just miss the meeting. And, and you just, and when you sign up and show up to be on city council, you just kind of know that that's what you need to do. On the first and the third Wednesdays, this is where you are. Mr. Mayor?
Well, first I got to hear a second. Is there a second? I'm changing this. Second call for a second? Third and last call for a second? Motion failed, no second. Anything else to change?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
You were sidelined at the last meeting and we we barely had a quorum. When it came to this item, I refused myself for potential conflict of interest reasons. And so the item was carried over to this meeting because we did therefore have a quorum to vote or discuss the item. So I'm again recusing myself for the same reason. And I'm doing that to give city care notice. And that's all I can say.
Care notice on what?
Take it as you will, Mr. Mayor.
Care notice that you're doing what? Okay.
You can't, you can't retaliate against someone for making an ADA claim. And, and also you can't usurp federal law by the city ordinance.
And I'm trying to do neither, but thank you for your thought. Okay, is there any other changes?
I think, Mr. Mayor, I, by including B, we are saying that that when someone thinks an issue is of particular importance and there isn't a quorum, then you just zoom in people in order to get a quorum.
That is what it means, I believe.
That is what it means. And we are, I mean, we are going to take the city council from being held... And, uh, we are, uh, I mean, we are going to take the city council from being held, uh, at least in my mind with some esteem, uh, to the ridiculous. If that's the kind of, uh, city council we're going to have is that whenever you want to call a meeting and because you think something's important enough and you're not sure that you're going to have a quorum, you just zoom them in.
And I myself would not have a problem seeing DC to D go for that reason. I'm, I'm agreeing with Mary Jo on that.
Well, could we note that in a minute?
And I guess I'll restate my, uh, same feelings I stated the last week, the last meeting, to all slow our oath to do our duty. Our duty as city council people is to sit here and face our public who may not be here tonight, but we should not be allowed to hide at home behind a Zoom or behind any other camera when we swore to be here to take care of the public. Now, if you look at what's going on in, in Washington DC right now, them guys are all meeting at the Congress where they should be. When the, the state legislature meeting next year, they will all be meeting in person. They won't be hiding behind Zooming. Now, if you want to hold the occasional conference meet, or committee meeting by Zoom, I guess that's probably okay. I don't agree with that either because again, the public has the right to come in and see it. They have the right to say, I want to come talk to us, they need to see our body language, you know? They need to know if we're serious about what we're saying or if we're just reading something, somebody just reached over and handed it to me, they ain't ever gonna know what's going on. They need to know if we're actually paying attention to them. If we're sitting there giving a speech on, and you're on Zoom, we don't know what they're doing. For all we know, and I'm not picking on you, but you're the only guy on Zoom tonight, for all we know, he's sitting there watching.
I am not the only person.
The only council person, the only council person on Zoom.
It's taken care of, yes, and over.
For all we know, he could be sitting over there watching documentary on whatever. How much attention is he really paying to us? And you can't tell that by Zoom.
Obviously quite a bit, Mr. Brown.
Well, I thought you refused yourself to not enter into a discussion. So you can just sit back and say nothing. You can just, you can just sit back and say nothing or not, and not, or not refuse.
This is only directed at me.
That one, it's very possible.
Mr. Mayor, reviewing this, if we don't have something like this in place, the only option we have is a call of the council. For everyone's edification, the police come around and pick you up and bring you to the meeting and the rest of the city to cuddle our thumbs until you get here, for what that is. There is no option for voting electronically, the president. There never has been, ever since I came on council sometime ago, upon issues of the first year I was here. So this is actually a step in the right direction, I think, to direct it. I do believe it needs to be done on an extremely dire basis and not on a regular basis. It's important we show up here. If you want to, you can show up with a face mask, but you shouldn't be hiding behind a face shield because it hides your features. If someone out here reads lips, they have no idea what Mary Jo's saying at all. I've got a niece like that, just is fine, hypersensitive to that right now. Um, she can't attend school because she can't see what the teachers are saying. She can't read the lips. So it's important that we figure out some way that we can communicate and be all in the same room at the same time, whether it's a council meeting or it's a committee meeting, whatever. I think we've got enough of this under handle now that we can separate appropriately, we can sanitize it properly and we can all be here and participate accurately. So if you're gonna do this, well, electronically, I think it'll be for a short duration on, and on a meeting by meeting basis only. Thank you.
I approve that we get rid of B, C, and D.
Second, okay. Dan moved to remove B, C, and D under number one, said it was seconded by Russ, further discussion. Question's been called for to remove items B, C, and D under item number one on the addendum. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay.
Refused.
Uh, Mr. Mayor?
I passed, by the way.
I would again like to offer a revised version of A. And A would read, uh, and I do have a shield in my car, I am very sensitive to that fact that people cannot read my lips, so I will take off my mask. An emergency exists such as a declared national comma, state comma, and/or municipal, uh, emergency or natural disaster and/or public health crisis, period. Uh, oh, I'm, I'm sorry, uh, crisis which prevents council members from attending in person, period. Uh, strike, uh, the next clause that says and immediate action is needed, that, that isn't necessary. Uh, then the ending sentence, I think is a good one, uh, and we need to fill it in. Uh, it would say, emergency situations shall be declared ended upon the occurrence of, uh-
I'm saying that.
The executive's, uh, declaration or, uh, I mean, is that good? Would that suffice, Mr. Mayor or Mr. Dolan?
Well, I left that blank just precisely for this reason, because I thought it was something the council needed to debate.
How about saying, uh, occurrence, upon, ended upon the occurrence of the removal of the disaster or crisis? Or something, get things started discussing. Might be better ways of saying that.
Removal of a disaster or crisis. Uh, disaster or maybe it would be, uh, a removal of the emergency. No, I like your disaster. Uh, disaster declaration or something.
Do you have that motion, is there a second?
Disaster and/or emergency occurrence.
How about just crisis?
Okay.
Is there a second?
Okay, Dan, could you go ahead and just make that motion? Take care.
Okay, I have a call for a second. Here, one, is there a second?
Now second it, just to open it up for discussion.
Okay, and Mary Jo made the motion, Dan seconded discussion. And this is to change the wording on part eight to an emergency exists such as declared national, state, or municipal or natural disaster and/or public health crisis which prevents council members from attending in person. Emergency situation shall be declared ended upon the occurrence of the removal of the disaster or crisis.
Okay, what, what would you mean by emergency health situation? How, without getting into HIPAA violations?
Well, not situation crisis.
Or, well.
So it's pretty much, if they declare a pandemic, that would be-
Soon as they declare a pandemic, we all get to go home and nobody gets to do anything but on Zoom anymore. Um, we're in the middle of a pandemic right now, right? Here, we're all sitting here in public. I feel very confident that I'm not going to get the COVID from anybody in this room or I'm going to spread it to anybody in this room. I mean, I do realize it's possible, but I just don't think this, this emergency is enough to prevent the city council from doing its job. We can, this pandemic right now, if it gets worse, if, you know, we can put plexiglass shields up and shield each of us separately from each other, which is completely, you know?
It could be then.
If that's an ADA requirement, then let's put the plexiglass shield up and let's get the council back there working where they should be. You know, I mean, and I'm, I'm trying to figure out how to say things without Mr. Walsh taking it personal. Nothing I'd say has any personal bearings on Mr. Walsh being here or not. So, I mean, the, two weeks ago, he said something about sitting over in the corner with a dun hat. I don't know whoever said anything about a dun hat, but I personally think if that's what it takes for me to do my sworn oath to come sit in that corner with a dun hat, I'll sit there a damn year.
And, and that was Stacy and I, we didn't mean for that to be interpreted as a dun hat. That was done because that was the most likely place to put a person and kept six feet away from everybody, including anybody coming through the door, put chairs around to, so six feet would not be within.
And again, I don't see nothing wrong with sitting in the corner if that's what it takes too much longer.
I guess I'm, uh, Mr. Mayor, I'm thinking that, uh, there are other times, uh, and I'm thinking that, uh, such as terrible fires. And if there was a, if our local health officials said, yeah, if you have underlying, uh, blood or pulmonary issues and you should not leave your home, uh, then I think that that, that's the kind of crisis that constitutes, uh, being able to zoom in. It, it's not just, uh, and I don't mean to say just, but it's not, I, I was hoping to get this a little bit more, uh, general than pandemics. Uh, there are, are other health crises and national emergencies, uh, that will, that could prevent a person from attending in person.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question here. We're trying to figure out how to, um, basically remove the ability to come in remotely, um, but I'm still a little fuzzy on what invokes this to begin with. Usually the person invoking would be the person to cancel it. So do we need to have something, some kind of verbiage in here that says that an emergency exists, the mayor may declare this has happened and we're gonna be allowed by Zoom afterwards and mayor to cancel that nonsense or something? I'm just thinking outside here now, but we need some way to invoke it, some way to move sunset.
Okay, so a national, state, and/or-
Who's gonna declare that?
Emergency, okay.
Who's gonna declare it?
It would be the president.
The occurrence of the removal of the disaster or crisis declaration.
Okay, who's gonna declare it?
The ones that called it.
Whoever called it.
And if I called the emergency, then it would be, governor would be the governor, if he called it.
Well, I can see where the president of the United States could call him for Washington DC for something. Wouldn't have any effect on us out here, it would still be under us. So I don't think that would be appropriate. I think this needs to be a declaration by the mayor, by the president of the council or something. Somebody.
More local than civil.
Yeah, this needs to be a local thing.
I think it would be designated by the mayor and if the mayor's incapable, you know, whatever, something happened to him, whatever, then the president of the council. And anything beyond that should go on to the, the emergency rules kick in, you call an emergency meeting, the council comes together. And in fact, if he declares a meeting or, if he declares an emergency or you declare an emergency, that should automatically click in an emergency meeting in the city council to approve it or not to approve it. Or emergency in 10, 48 hours or whatever the, but that's one time the city can have an emergency zoning meet, or, excuse me, an emergency council meeting, the council people would get here and they would say, okay, does the emergency really exist or is this another one of those little, well, I think it is or maybe it ain't or whatever, but there's no emergency and then nothing happens. If there's an emergency, the council needs to get together anyway, an emergency, and they need to decide what they're gonna do about the emergency. It shouldn't be just the mayor say, oh, it's an emergency, everybody zoom in and, and.
I can't remember the time that I have between when I declare an emergency and when the council has to meet. I'm not, it might be two days, I don't remember.
I don't think it is.
It's not very, but it's not very long time between those two things.
And I think a state, uh, there very easily could be a state emergency called by the government, uh, easily. Uh, we're in, uh, we are in the midst of one right now. Uh, we, we happen to not have to, uh, be under the, uh, guidelines, uh, for social distancing and for, uh, mask wearing because of our incidents, but, uh, but this is an emergency that is called by the government. And I, I think that rather than give the impression that we are making the decision on whether there's an emergency, we need to, those declarations come from the experts in whatever the field might be, whether it's wildland fire management or, uh, pandemics and, and, uh, community health and public health or, uh, I mean, I can see that there might be some kind of nuclear, uh, disaster and those are, we can't make those kinds of decisions, Don.
I think we can. On a local level, I think we should be the ones that declared it for us, affects us. They can undeclare it into affect us. Actually, if you guys remember, I know it was a long time ago, this pandemic started, I declared the emergency for the city. And then I put it to you guys at, and I don't remember, I might've taken too long and I apologize if I did, but I put it to you guys as a vote of a resolution of the council to keep it as a declared emergency. You remember I did that? So it is one of the city now too. But it's also up to us that we can remove that, declare an emergency anytime.
And I think that's where it should be. We should have local control over this. I don't like Washington DC dictating to me everything, or they're hellin' dictating to me everything, especially on these, really maybe no, no concern us. Maybe they do, maybe they don't, but I don't, they, they don't think they're in a position to talk to us about it.
They, they have the experts, uh, Don, in terms of, uh, pandemics and community health and the idea that we, uh, are, have that expertise, um, uh, is, is silk.
Well, I'm not saying we can't listen to them, but I'm saying the local control needs to be local. You're right, they have the plexiglass for Jason, which we don't. You're right. But that's something that we can listen to here, make that decision here.
Well, I, if there is a national or state disaster, declared disaster, then that should, uh, that should constitute, uh, one of the criteria by which someone can zoom into a meeting.
Well, I- We're, we're in the middle of a pandemic right now, we have emergency, I don't know if the gov, the federal government, I don't think they would be quoting emergency, but I don't know.
They'd be clearly pandemic.
I get confused about that now because one of the, anyway, the state of Montana declared emergency and they said, all right, everybody go home, dah, dah, dah. But now we have high school kids in school, there's what, four, five hundred high school kids going to school down there? If they could go to school down there, I would surely think the council could step forward and do their, because we've got school teachers expected to teach the kids, we have all those kids, next week all the grade schools, they're, they're all going to go to school. And, and I don't know we're in such an emergency if we send our little kids out into this big emergency if it's that bad. I don't, I don't know what, what we're gonna do if it's really a bad one.
I would be happy to get you a copy of the directives, uh, if you need it. We are not, uh, our, our, uh, infection rate is not such that we are into the state directives.
My point exactly. I wonder if this should be passed off to, to, uh, fire and order committee, take a look at this, try to work something on it. As long as we can handle it that way. Otherwise, we're gonna be here till midnight, I give them that. So you want to table it until the next fire and order committee or sign it?
I think it's not a judiciary.
I have fire and order and I have judiciary, fire and order.
Will you accept it?
Yep.
Okay.
Anyways, I'd like to say something anyways, I, I'm along the lines of Raymond, um, I've been on council for almost 10 years now. And this is the first time that we've had a pandemic or anything. I think we should, it should be each individual disaster or pandemic be issued or addressed at the time that we need to. Not for everything. I mean, I've always, when I couldn't come, I didn't come. I mean, when I-
I mean, when I had the cancer, I talked to the mayor, told him that I wouldn't be here for a certain amount of time. I was excused and therefore my voice was not heard. Now, could I have done it on Zoom? I don't know. As sick as I was, I don't know that I could have. But we didn't have that option there and I, and I agree with Raymond. We took an oath to serve the community. And I think that we should take, look at things as an individual case and not, what do I want to say?
Mainstream?
Mainstream, yeah, mainstream everything to, well, I can't do this, I can't do that. No. We're here to do, serve our community and I think we should be here to do that. Okay, I have on the table a motion to table to Fire and Order, the next meeting Fire Order. And was there a second?
Oh, a second.
Okay. And I'll just go again and call the question, answer the question. And if all those in favor of tabling this item to the next Fire and Order Committee meeting, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay.
Because.
Okay. Okay, I'll get that on the next agenda for then. Okay. Next item, budgets. Discuss the 2021 preliminary budget and make changes. This is the time that you guys can also make, and you could have made changes all the way through too. And this is the time that I was told that we really are trying to push this thing through. I started the budget in June. I took it to the council in July. I went to public hearings in August. Now we have to vote on it. That was not, in my opinion, pushing something through fast. I was going through the actual process of how a budget is supposed to be done and I've done my due diligence. So when the statement's made, and I don't know how to do a budget or anything that might entail that, I totally disagree with that statement. So now.
You're speaking to me, Mr. Mayor. I made no such personal statement.
I took it as such.
Matter of fact, if you run the tape, I made a specific statement that it was not your fault. It wasn't anybody individually.
Okay. Now let's go in, is there any changes? Now, first off, we do have to change it. And right off the bat, I hate to say this, I don't know exactly everywhere. We can go through tonight to do it. I'm not trying to pass away, but we did make some changes on the engineering agreement at Idaho Street. Now, in the budget, we had in there to do the project and that, but we did not have in there the engineering cost for that, that fire member. So.
Was that supposed to be equal to fire, to water and sewer? Mr. Mayor?
Okay, there was, well, yeah, it was in there, so. Well, let me look, let me just say, let me look into it more detail and talk with him for sure. But what I did is I took his sheet and mainly it was the back sheet. And when I did the numbers, he said this is what was cost. And they didn't have any engineering in here. It was all for the Idaho Street, the other part of it that he added. And that's where the 72 was, because we added extra stuff.
So we have 70,000 under sewers, I imagine you have 70 underwater as well.
Well, the 70 under sewer is a different thing, but.
For engineering?
Yeah, because this is water only.
Oh, Mayor, sorry.
So.
But wasn't some of this engineering behind the street too?
Yes. And that's why I got to talk with him. It might be added to the street and I can't answer that right now. I hate to ask you guys to approve it with a number that, I mean, we got to approve it. The law says we got to approve it tonight, otherwise it's not a lawful budget. Okay. So. Added to that though was, I don't know if it's the full 72, because I think part of that 72,000 should be paid by water. That would also cover that in there, you know? I think, we've got to get the numbers straight now, but I tell you right now, that number was not added into the money that he's going to borrow. But I don't believe it's the full 72, even though we, the vote was to do the street. You know, some of that should still be paid for by the water department or the water funds. And so his back sheet, I don't believe is correct. Some of that should have been paid by the street, not all of it. Some of it is legitimate water payment, water, or water money. That should have been done on that street. Like, for example, he shows some of the cutting in that, you know? Well, the engineering that went into some of the cutting stuff should have been paid for by water. Some of the rest should be paid for by the street.
I agree with Mr. Mayor, I don't see the engineering costs being included here.
And so if you can, and I know this is some trust. I will give you guys the numbers next meeting. But let me get a hold of Dow, still approve the final budget. Let me get a hold of Dow. Let me find out the exact amount, then I will add it to the amount that we will borrow. And I'll change the amounts, you know, the payment amounts. I will change those things and I'll show you in the highlighted what changes for just this item.
If we don't like it, we still don't have to approve the borrowing of the money.
Oh, right, this is just put in the budget.
So at the end. Putting it in the budget, so if we don't like the numbers. The only thing we'll pay for will be the engineering and they'll put that on the shelf and keep it till later, basically.
That's correct, yes.
So the engineering will be a cheap deal to get if we don't agree with what happened and we can't afford it, then we'll opt for the engineering.
Right, because this is not the last and final vote here. You guys got other votes, mainly to set up the payment or the loan, sorry. So you guys got a vote on that, how, where we're going to get it from, you got to accept that. Things like that, you guys, and to set the project at the end, that has to be agreed to upon. This is just accepting budget to set aside money.
Right.
To do it, this is not actually doing that or getting permission to do it, so.
Well, with the exception of the contract, we get to proof of it, we're going to pay for that.
Correct, that is correct.
But we're going to have to pay for that, what do we do or not, I don't know anymore.
Well, and realistically, we approve this contract. We're going to go through with this project, I mean, really.
Maybe.
Oh, if not, I mean.
There's still a lot of, a lot of things that could happen when the engineering gets back.
Yeah, it's true, though.
It's all good.
Um, Mr. Mayor, were there additions to the police budget?
Additions, you mean once I put out this budget and you guys accept it?
So I think that, I mean, I'm thinking that there was, in the original budget for next year, was the, a new car. And then, and also I think there was the purchase of six casers.
Yes.
And then at the last meeting, Assistant Chief Alvarez came in and said that even the department would be having an additional request of 32,000. And it would be for a new dispatch system, including a person.
It was the dispatcher themselves, or it was?
Pardon?
It's the dispatcher themselves, the software's already been approved.
Yeah, and if you look on page 39, if anybody brought the book.
I did.
Page 39, in there, the contracted services with, for the dispatcher, the 132,000 includes that, I believe.
I'll say, but he did actually say they were going to hire another position.
That's correct.
Right, that's true position.
Because if you go further on in there, you will see there's a budget for the police levy. And they're paying their share, and that's 33,000. So that's a total of 165,000. And now I'm trying to remember, I can't remember if that covered that extra dispatcher or not. I don't remember now.
Change right there.
Yes. Yeah, gee, does that cover it?
I don't know, I had talked to you about it and we were going to put it in there. I don't know if he did or not, I guess I can look back on it and, and see.
And actually, let me, I'm just not trying to interrupt you, but I kind of answered my other questions. If I look at the last year, it was 132. So I would say it didn't get added in. So there isn't another additional, it won't be 32 there, even though that would be our cost. I split it between general fund and police levy and it goes two tenths. Because there's 10 officers that uses the dispatch of eight officers and chief and Alvarez. So I split it, two tenths pays out of police levy, because that's funded too with all the cost. So you take two tenths of 32, 32,000, that will go out of the police levy. The rest of it will be out of general fund. So that will be additional whatever that comes out of.
Would you want to amend that tonight or?
You could do that.
I don't know if it's 35,000 or 112.
Yes, 6,400 would come out of police levy and the rest would be.
And was it 32?
It was.
Okay.
So the 15,600 would come out of general fund.
And 6,400 comes out of the police levy.
That was mine, not involved.
And so that will be, I don't know.
Uh-uh, that doesn't work.
What?
15 and 6,400 doesn't give you 32,000.
That's not 15,000.
I'm sorry, 25,000.
Ah, I'll go for that.
25,600.
So the police levy one, which is page 44, that number will now be 39,400. And the other one, that would be page 41 under, no, not 41, 40, sorry, page 40, top of page 40. That would be 25,6, add it on, so you'll have Do I have a motion to change those two as is?
Some of them.
Certainly. It's been moved by Russ, hanging in by Don, discussion and further discussion. It's pretty much to use the police, you got to have them since they're hiring it. So. Call for the question. Questions we call for to approve the changes to the budget, the preliminary budget on line item 116 on page 40 under the police budget. It's going to be 157,600 and under page.
44?
44, under the same line item 116, up to code 116, it'll change to 39,400. Or those two will add up to, well, changes is 32,000. But the total amount, we have to add those up. Is there a question? I'll put that in the end. Questions we call for to amend those two, all those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed, say nay. Take that as unanimous to change those two.
I'm assuming you'll go through and change everything to reflect that through the book.
Right, just by that line now changes your balance.
Correct.
So the balance on both of those will decrease by 32,000. Or your expenditures will increase by, one would be 25,600 and the other one 6,400. It's under the balance sheet. And that's the, almost the first sheet there. So your expenditures will link up that amount. So your difference in cash is still plus, just not as much plus for either one.
Mr. Mayor, the other question I have is on the inclusion in the budget of the underwater and sewer of the 500,000 plus money that is to be used for, to begin building the shop out at the lagoons. And I, I, I just think that this is, well, I don't know my reasons for. And I, I want to know that I have discussed it with lots of, lots of people. And that how, this just, we're not being careful with citizens' money.
Well, what, some of that had to do, just to give some history, is.
I went back to your first year, Mayor. Yeah. And I believe that at that time it was $50,000 and you were adamantly against it, building that building. Because you thought it was too much money.
Now, I think you're thinking of a different building. That one was 250,000 and I vetoed that one. And I was adamantly against that. This didn't come out until a year or two later after that. That was down in, that was at the water, wastewater treatment plant, it was. What it was is at the headworks. The engineer was wanting to build this humongous building to surround and keep it heated and that. And the cost was going to be like 250,000 dollars just to build a building to protect this kind of a corkscrew that keeps the solids from going into the system. That's all it was going to do. So I went through and we designed it and it passed. You know, I got called in, the state came down and inspected it, numerous people came and inspected it and everybody's like, okay, no problem. Because the engineer turned me in saying I had no power to do that. Nobody had a problem with it. He said it was unsafe, Director of Operations also said it was unsafe, not taught before, no, not true. The gases were completely controlled, and that's what that was, was that building.
Okay, okay, I see, I can understand.
There was not the other, but later on, I don't remember when it started, I thought it was like two years.
I think when the Esko was, you know, taking, offered this sort of building.
That kind of started, and that's whenever they were doing that and tearing it apart is kind of when the whole thing started. But it's all related also though too, is I was trying to get the water and sewer moved out. And the only reason is, is so they would be kind of open up and start doing ADA changes. And that's why we've been trying to do money raising to help fix the building up, to meet all ADA. The bathrooms are not ADA at all, they're not even close. But the only way to make them is I got to make them wider. I have no room to make anything wider. If the water and sewer guys go out and they actually have a building out there, I can make, or we can start working. And the first thing I would do is the entrances and the bathrooms make them ADA. That's what this whole thing is about, is trying to do, you know, not, I don't have a problem keeping them here, but all it's going to take is somebody getting a little upset, take us to court. And it's not going to bring us to any parts, what it's going to do is raise everybody's taxes and they pay for it right now.
That's what I, exactly what you have just described is why I would like this out of the budget. It is a, we're putting it in the budget to meet goals that have nothing to do with a shop. And I think that we should go back to the drawing boards and say, okay, we need to make this building ADA compliant, how do you do that? And you make a plan for that. And we need a shop to house the equipment, how do you do that? And you do it in a.
And that has been done. Now, we paid, we paid money to get an engineer and an architect and all that to relook at this whole building. And they came up with a plan and this is the way to do ADA. And that's what we're trying to follow, is that plan. So we have a plan on that part.
I have, that's not the part of the budget that I'm concerned about, I'm concerned about.
The first part starts with the water and sewer being removed. If you read the plan, their whole plan was based on water and sewer. If you read the plan, their whole plan was based on water and sewer gone. If they're not gone, none of that could be helped, none of that could be worked on.
None of that, I mean, I don't, that part of the budget I'm not concerned about. I am concerned about five hundred thousand plus dollars being allocated to the, to begin building a shop. And that's how it is listed in the budget, to begin building a shop out of the lagoon property for water and sewer. And, and I, you know, in my nightmares, I have that we will be called to a meeting because we found that if we sign up on this project tonight, we will be able to get grant money to pay for half of the engineering. And it'll just be one of those things that instead of thinking through it, it's just, it just gets pushed through. And a half million dollars gets spent, at least probably a lot more than a half million, probably closer to three quarters of a million dollars, on a shop to house the equipment.
And the first...
Well, that was the original goal, was to house the equipment.
So is there a motion to remove those line items under water and sewer, under fifty-two, twenty, and fifty-three, twenty?
And I think that the public is watching what we do on this.
I don't have a problem with them watching. Do you do a motion on that?
Yes, I move that the project to build, to begin building a, I don't know, a shop for, and there's two hundred and twenty-five thousand out of both water and sewer. And I think under sewer, there are a couple other line items. I think there's a thirty thousand dollar line item to bring, to put a pipe underneath.
So they're, both of them have the same amount. I'll help you on that.
Okay, install the sewer and water service lines for the new shop.
Right.
And so that's twenty fifty, two hundred and sixty thousand. And that would be, so five hundred, six hundred and ten thousand, is that, but, five hundred and ten thousand. And I, my motion is to remove that, I mean, the money will still stay in there, and we could use that money for possibly, like, making the sewers so that they actually drain. We don't have lakes every time it rains, or, you know, other things.
Actually, I hope that we don't have lakes when the sewer doesn't. Do you hear a bit really upset about that?
She's talking storm drains.
Storm drains, but...
Well, storm drains are very strict.
Can't touch.
Motion.
Well, we could use the money for other things, and that it may not be...
Water has to be used for water, and sewer has to be used for sewer.
And it could be used for other water projects and other sewer projects, and it is not allocated for, to build a shop.
Okay, there is a motion made, is there a second?
Side.
Okay, it's been moved by Mary Jo, seconded by Rich. Discussion, any further discussion?
This, once again, this is just a piggyback. We're just squirreling away money is all we're doing. The project has never been approved at this point, there's been proposals, but we have not approved it. It has to be approved before you can spend the funds. So leaving in or taking out doesn't make any difference. Something comes up and we need the money for it, we can take it out later, just a budget amendment. It's not a big thing.
And Don, I believe that what will happen in the future is that we will be called to a special meeting, and if we approve it that night, we will be able to have access to something, a building that's on sale, or access to some grant money. Or, I mean, there'll be one of those things that is at the very last minute.
Granted, not everybody operates on city time. I agree with that. There's sometimes you have to get off, off your duff and do something, you're right. And we can't necessarily wait a month for a community meeting, another month for minutes to come out, another month where it gets on the council. Sometimes you gotta step up to the plate and take a swing on the ball, guys.
We do that, we do that all of the time.
Mm-hmm. Well, once again, this is not a project that's battleable yet. So I'll be able to make the plate.
And my dad, though, using Mary Jo's example, if we got the money in there, if we get a chance to get a five hundred thousand dollar grant, I don't see why we wouldn't want it in there to use it. If we can get a five hundred thousand dollar grant, we wouldn't have to spend the money.
That'd be a good point.
So if it's already in there and the chances come up for a grant, and we've already got the money budgeted, and oh, we have to spend a hundred thousand to get a building built, I think we're prudent to have the money in the budget to do it.
Yeah, like, like a, what do you call it, we put in a dollar and they put in thirty dollars. Matching funds.
There's grants out there, and I suspect after this covert deal is going around and the money gets thrown out there, there might be more money out there to build a building than we know, and we need to be ready to go. To fit the calls for a special meeting, because we have a grant application in there and has to be done in thirty days, and we have to have a special meeting to get started on it. I think all the motivation is to keep it in there now. I never thought about your grant idea.
When you wish upon a star.
Well, I'm still looking for a second. Oh, no, I got a second, sorry, we're still in discussion, I'm sorry.
Call for the question.
Question's been called for to remove the line items on the lagoon, there's two in water and two in sewer, that adds up to like, what, five hundred and twenty, I think? So all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed say nay?
Nay.
I take it the only one that says aye was Mary Jo, and the rest of them was nay. Is that correct?
I said aye.
Okay, so I, I didn't hear you yet, sorry, but I will mark you down as aye. So on that one to remove... Okay, the motion fails to remove, so they stay in there. It does not mean though that it's been approved, nor is any money being spent on it. That would take later. And I promise on that, I will not do a fast one, unless it comes along with, like Raymond said. If there's a grant that we have to apply to within a couple weeks, I might try to push that across to get the money. Besides that, though, I would not push it through. We'd go through the whole slow process still. Call for the question on the first resolution. On that first, is there any other discussion on changing the budget?
Just my comment that I think you were gonna allow now. And I asked it in the form of a question of my colleagues, and I didn't get a response that anybody else was tired of eleventh hour having to make a decision or else situations. So I think I'm alone on that, so I'll not discuss it any further. I've got a year to think about it and how I wanna pursue it, so I'll consider that and pursue it later.
Okay. Now, on item number two, there is no real motion to make. We just went through changing. We don't have a motion to approve the resolution, which is accepting and making it final budget.
I move to...
And that's item number four, so we're done with two, and that's how I take it, let's move to item four, which is the first resolution. I'm looking for a motion.
I move to approve resolutions adopting the twenty twenty, twenty-one fiscal year as...
Second. As amended.
As amended. We just amended it tonight.
Second.
And it's been moved by Raymond, seconded by Phil. Discussion. And just to tell you guys also, to remind you, I will be adding the correct amount for the water crossing amount for the engineering for Idaho Street. So that will be added in there too. Call for the question.
I have, I have a question for Attorney Dolan, excuse me, Dolan.
Gary? Yeah.
That dry month. Mr. Dolan, I guess we're in a situation where we have to approve it tonight or bad things happen. Order those bad things legally.
Well, we'd lose out on some revenue, I assume. The statute, I think, requires approval by October fifteenth, I believe.
Now, it's, it changed if, not trying to...
No, no, it's okay, go ahead.
It's gotta be approved by the first Thursday after the, or first Thursday after the first Tuesday. That is tomorrow. And legally, we cannot have another meeting tomorrow, because we have not noticed it. You know, so that's why it's tonight. And what can we do? I'm not trying to speak for you, but you're correct, I believe you're correct. You don't get to receive any tax money. I don't think you have any rights to write a checks.
Okay, so bad things would be basically if we, having been presented this tonight, if we don't decide it tonight, then the speaker gets turned off as far as...
The city shuts down, basically.
Correct. I just wanted to establish, thank you.
I guess it ought to be said publicly that as much as we're down to the wire on there, it isn't because of the lack of the finance committee or the mayor for laying in the budget. Some of this stuff, you have a set of numbers that you don't get until, once the final tax numbers actually come in. It was first of, first of August, so really, for having realistically two months and six meetings, I think they've done a pretty good job on the budget. Is it perfect? Probably not, that's what they make budget amendments for. And I think, you know, they've worked hard at it, I mean, Mary Jo can attest, she went to all the meetings, or most of the meetings anyway. She knows that they spent a lot of time on this budget, and I think we have to give them an old, rounded boss and thank them for a wonderful job they did on this budget, whether we like it or not. It's something we're gonna have to live with for the year, and we can always change it if we don't like it.
Mr. Mayor?
Hi.
Can I, can I type in for just a moment? I know it's not my place, but I'd also like to echo Raymond. I thought the issue actually, with all you guys have had on your plate and everything you've done, is, it was pretty stellar, and so I commend you guys for that.
Thank you. Well, thank you. Any other discussion on it? This is item four. Once again, call for the question.
Call for a question.
Thank you. Question's been called for to approve the resolution adopting the twenty twenty-one fiscal year budget for the city of Dillon as amended, and levying taxes to provide revenue for that budget, allocating those funds to various budget categories and city activities. Could all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed say nay?
Abstained.
So, side one, do you think I take the rest of them, we're affirmative? Okay, thank you. Now we have a final budget. Now, there's a bunch of other ones too now.
Mr. Mayor, I propose we take them all, is one fell swoop. Item five to thirteen, the gang together all through for tonight at once.
Second.
It's been moved by Don, seconded by Russ. Discussion. Just to tell you, all those resolutions, what they do is this is how you set up taxes for assessments, districts. They're not set up districts, but you take your money through assessments and taxes. And this is what you have to do, so that's what all these resolutions are. And then when this is done, and I gotta set up, go through, generate the big long list that I sent to the county, and there's a shorter list, not a much shorter bill, that I give to Janey that does the billing parts of it. Because on the assessments, not tax assessments, we assess all the government entities. I can't tax them, but I can assess them, and I do that, at least the ones that I know, except for I can't do federal. They pay a rule, but I can do state, and I've done that. And I also can do county. So they can pay for lighting district, they can pay for street maintenance, sprinkling, they can pay for those. I can assess them, and that's what the billing is. I can't tax them, because they're non-taxable, but I have Janey bill them. It's not that I started, this has been done for years that way. I'm just continuing it.
Maybe we don't tax on this person's post office, the forest service, VLN, DQ.
Well, I tax the property, because the forest service is leasing the property. And so I can tax the, for, I don't wanna tax the property that, and standing with VLN, that's owned by somebody else.
Right, it's leased.
And so I can tax them through the lease, one part of it. I don't tax the government, but the owner of the building, and I think he, or he or she or whatever passes it on to the government through, you know, their amount of lease.
Mr. Mayor, could you go through and define the different category of property types?
Well, on the one, for the, for the ones that, like the police levy, your general obligation bond, on those, I don't think there's any others.
Lighting districts too also are broken down, appropriate.
Right, well, on those, it's just your...
Our only question, Mr. Mayor, we have a motion on the floor.
And this is part of it, she's wanting me to explain the resolutions that's in front before the...
Well, I believe the motion was to combine items five through thirteen.
Now, the motion was approved by items five through thirteen.
I believe, Mr. Hand, if I heard it correctly, made a motion to combine all of those motions together.
My challenge is to combine them, approve.
As amended, second.
Okay. To correct that, the motion is, Don made the motion to combine and accept or approve all of the resolutions, five through thirteen. Now, on the properties, on those, they just do special property, or regular property tax, and they show up on the property tax for the ones that just told you the taxes. You know, and they go on to your taxes, you know. The other ones are districts. Lighting district, street maintenance, and sprinkling. Those three districts, we had set up a few years ago that, to use this district, it has to do partially on the size of the property and partially on the fixed cost. And what we're using is these property types that are set up by the state. On those, AR, AU, and FU are agricultural land, and one's called Hornstead Urban. Nobody has that FU, they'd use that. I didn't choose the con... The next ones are commercial, that's the, I think it's business, urban, commercial, or, commercial world, and commercial urban. That's commercial property. And we treat on the street maintenance a little different on them. Usually, the, how much gets taken out is kind of on the lighting, and on sprinkling was kind of based upon the size. Okay, more about, so the bigger the place is, the more the, because lighting, that means you have more streetlights around your place, you know, versus a really small one, you might have one, but usually it's by the blocks. Streets, though, you have, uh, government, commercials taxed a little higher, because they usually bring more traveling on the roads. More people come to stores than they would just coming into a house. Less people go to agriculture that uses the streets. This all has to do with the use of the street, who uses it the most. And we decided, towns decided that's, we will, you know, assess it a little higher. Now, it's not, I'm not telling you it's a lot higher, it's a little higher as well. Okay? The next one's exempt. That's the, some of the ones like Barrett Hospital, we assess them. College, County, those, a lot of those properties are exempt EP. Next ones are condominiums. KUIVU is condominiums. Next one, that's... Next one after that is rural, the residential, and townhouses. The Ts are townhouse. So TU is townhouse urban, RU is residential urban. And last ones are vacant lots. Vacant lot urban, and vacant lot rural. Okay?
Great. Thank you very much.
Any other questions? Further discussion later.
Call for the question.
Questions we called for to approve all the resolutions on item five through thirteen. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed say nay? I take that as unanimous. Now we can get the money and exist a little longer. Well, for the record, I did have, some of them, you notice, there was numbers at the end. Those are on the short, the sprinkler, not sprinkler. The lighting and the dis... And the street maintenance is like 50 pages, almost. That's why I didn't print them in the packet. They're over in, they are on the, online. Packet online, it's there, and they will be in the resolution book as whole. I just didn't want to kill a bunch more trees. And what it does is show every person that has a piece of property what is being assessed. Is what that does. Okay? You got a budget, Janey? Okay, moving on. Next item, the reports officers and boards of the city, city attorney.
All right, I promise I'll make it quick. We've been busy upstairs. I've seen a lot of criminal cases continue in the office. I do expect that that will continue, given Labor Day. I don't know, you know, what to expect, and I don't know that Chief Guyerson doesn't end up getting anything changing this year. We've been, I've been working with Chief Guyerson on some policies regarding citizen complaints to the police department. I don't have any updates on the Saxon matter at this time, and I've been working on various assignments by the mayor for water and sewer, street and alley, and parks and playgrounds.
Any questions? Okay, thank you. Fining board, Mr. Hammond. No meeting nor report. Thank you. Zoning board.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before you were in the chamber, August 11th minutes for your review and acceptance.
Move to... Second, second. Good move by Don, seconded by Dan, discussion.
The only thing that I've seen in the minutes that should be noted on August 11th is that we have updated tattoos and piercings. And I'm truly hoping, because I've already got my updated zoning doc, that all of you will receive a copy of the zoning doc as revised as of this month, for your pleasure to read, for clarity. Thanks, Mr. Hazel Baker.
Called for question. Questions we called for to accept the June 9th, 2020, and the August 11th, 2020, eight minutes in the zoning commission. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed say nay? I take that as unanimous.
Other than the zoning board is currently working, I'm sure they're getting new copies out to everybody so that all boards have the same zoning doc in addition. And they were truly just working on zoning and permits at this time. And I have to say, I do appreciate the property down in Kentucky and Chestnut. The native landscaping was resolved. Thank you. Three of the neighbors said thank you as well. That concludes my report.
Any questions? Thank you. Director of Operations, Mr. Hazel Baker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We're just time to just preparing for Labor Day, working with Chief Guyerson and Officer Alvarez, getting everything in place for this coming weekend. Monday morning at 2:00, because you come out of the bars, if you're looking for something to do, we appreciate any help in cleaning the streets for the, before the parade. So if you're coming out of the bars at that time, we appreciate your help. If you're already late.
11:00, I think, isn't it, Chief?
12:30.
Oh, 12:30?
Yeah, I think 12:30 is, whatever it's called, the zone.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right. Everybody's thinking, oh, work here.
We don't know. I don't have to worry about ours. The guys started today and will continue through the week painting crosswalks and various, the handicapped red zone areas downtown, various spots through the community. And then sometime, hopefully this fall, they go around and paint fire hydrants, once they need those, get to those. Thank you very much. We have a new water and sewer truck that is now in use. I appreciate the support of the council for that. And then the splash pad will be closing on Monday, and my understanding is that the company is coming up next week, next Friday, to winterize it and also look at what needs to be done to repair it. Nick, starting Tuesday, is gonna start drilling holes and running his camera down to see how deep the hole is, see what type of damage we have underneath it. And I guess I'd also like to congratulate Officer Guyerson and his family for the nice honor of being the grand marshals for the parade. It's a great representative of the police force, though. Do you get throughout candy?
No.
No? Well, we're the grand here of automations, Todd. So, the thousand, do you happen to answer any questions?
We also had the state go through and paint Idaho Montana and Midale.
Which one's old?
So, which one's in, or not buying, uh, it enters into Alderman?
They didn't do that.
Oh, they didn't do that?
No, but that's something, that's something we can do. A lot of the guys came in real early, or real late one night and did some marking there. One of the things that was discussed in one of the meetings last week is that if we put down some different lines, that would help the direction, help the flow.
About one all the way down, which shoulder there between the park lot and the street?
Something like that, yeah.
That's it. That's one.
Yeah. We're concerned there is to try to find somebody that can do a straight line. It's pretty marginal, what you, what you guys you work with, so.
Well, the guy that does a good straight line, doesn't put it down, is kind of spotty, almost tachious. And one that does a good solid straight line, who's wavy. Just joking. They're both good.
I just say, I don't think you are. I was saying that.
Sorry about interrupting you. Any questions for me? Okay, thank you. Thank you. Police Department, Chief Guyerson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thanks, everybody, and the council. And thank you, Diana, for taking minutes, you know, to go to this meeting twice, so I kind of feel bad for you.
Thank you.
So, just, we're preparing for Labor Day. It's gonna be interesting. I really don't know what to expect, so we've been prepared for the worst and hope for the best. You know, I, we really just don't know what to expect, so we'll deal with that when it comes. So, the officers are actually gonna be at the parade this year instead of standing by and watching the parade this year. I figured everything else is so screwed up in the, in the world right now, I might as well screw that up, too, a little bit. So, we've got people working, we've got people handling for traffic. You've challenged, gonna help the citizens with corners, and then we'll, we'll link out after the, after we're done with the parade and do our thing. I hate to inform everybody that Nikki Kenworthy has resigned as a police officer. Her last day was on the 31st, and Nikki was great. She's still patient, she's still kind, she's very nice to people, and she always made me look good, and I'll definitely miss, miss having Nikki around. But on a positive note, is we do the job pretty well, and it's actually closed already, the application process. We advertise it as, as per law and everything, but we, we've got some good applicants that pick, I actually, quite a few of them, so we're sitting through those, and it looks pretty promising, the number of applicants we got. So, we'll go forward on that right when Labor Day gets done. I'd like to thank Jim Dolan for, I'm kind of straight from the complaint process to, to a lot of people feeling more comfortable with how they, how they complain, and officers at the same time protecting their rights. It's kind of a process. So, so we're working on that with Jim's help. We have a squad meeting today, prepare for Labor Day, and of course, it's just later than... Any questions, you guys?
You'll miss Nikki.
I already do.
Chief Guyerson? I don't have a question, I'm sorry.
Oh, and very difficult to do. Assistant Chief Howard, as the state, you had some concerns or questions possibly on some items under the budget, and I can answer those questions. I think you might get caught up.
Uh, we approved the budget.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Okay, move on. Thank you, Chief. Our other chief, Fire Chief PJ Colsey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We are just kind of in lull right now. Wildland season, I guess, we're mainly going in Helena, another one in Rosewood County. We've been fairly fortunate, Forest Service on the Barrett Fire, has done a nice job managing that fire. We had some resources up there for about a week. Was able to staff a tender truck up there for a week, so that was good. That was helpful. The guys did a great job stepping up and offering to staff the truck. Yesterday, we had a young man who had some need for some community service hours came down. I had two of my younger firefighters come down and did a bunch of cleanup in the back lot, got all the trash out of the fences and stuff like that. And as we go forward with the training center out on Terry Lane, we will move some more of the stuff from the cage out there to get that cleaned up a little better. Other than that, I'll keep it short and sweet. Any questions?
Can we send the tender out? The funds that are paid by the Forest Service for that, that goes into Fire District?
District, yes, yep.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you. Thank you, Chief. Uh, see, a court's on here. See, a treasurer is. Karen?
Sorry.
Or Miss Kip?
How does that look? Um, you have before you the cash summary report for July 2020, the cash bank reconciliation report for July 2020, the collateral reports from Stockman Bank and Bank of Commerce for the same date, right? And I would ask for approval.
Looked approved. Second, good move by Russ, seconded by Dan, discussion?
Call for the question.
Questions been called for to approve the cash summary report for July 2020, the cash bank reconciliation report for July 2020, and the collateral reports from Stockman Bank and the Bank of Commerce for the same date. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed say nay? I take that as unanimous for all of them. Karen, how's the new software working out?
It's very good.
Your learning curve relatively short?
What's that?
Your learning curve is relatively short for how it operates?
I don't know. Opinions vary, but I'm getting around it a bit.
Very good, thank you. Any questions? Other questions? Okay, thank you, Karen. Tree board? I know you probably haven't had a meeting because it's so summer, but...
Um, we'll have a meeting next month. We're finishing up at the end of the season, how we, we remold the trees for the coming winter.
Okay, thank you. Now, we got reports officers and, or standing committees, sorry, Judiciary Committee, Mr. Nye.
Yes, before you have the minutes for the August 18th meeting, ask for your approval.
Looked approved. Second.
Good move by Russ, seconded by Bill, discussion?
Call for the question.
Questions been called for to approve the August 18th, 2020 meeting minutes of the Judiciary Committee. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed say nay? I take that as unanimous?
We're just working along, so. We, as you can see on the minutes, we finally stopped working on the one. We decided that we can sit and argue on it forever, so just leave it the way it is.
Okay?
Yep.
Moving on. Finance Committee, Mr. Hammond. Before you have our minutes in the last minute, ask your acceptance.
Move to second.
Okay, Russ, move, Dan, second. For the service, discussion? Now, just one of the minutes, right? Call for the question. Questions been called for to approve the August 27th, 2020 meeting minutes of the Finance Committee. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed say nay? I take that as unanimous? Then we have four action items. Last, if you approve the line item budget, the fund summary for claims, the claims by vendor report, and the budget versus actual report, all for August 2020.
Moved approved. Second.
Good move by Bill, seconded by Russ, discussion?
Call for the question.
Questions been called for to approve the line item budget report, the fund summary for claims, the claims by vendor report, and the budget versus actual report, all for August 2020. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed say nay? I take that as unanimous for all four. Anything else? That completes my report. Thank you. Fire in order, Mr. Schaefer.
No meeting, no report.
Health and welfare, Mr. Shaw.
No meeting, no report, but report regarding the city-county health board. We did approve the parade. It should be noted, do not throw out candy. University of Montana Western is 100% mask-friendly and required. Surely, we have 71 cases in Beaverton County. 69 of them have recovered. Amen. We have one active, just diagnosed yesterday, and we have one death. So, surely, COVID re our cabinet. We'll see what happens with the high school going back in session, Labor Day weekend, and the schools going back into session next week. It's been a very active city-county health board, and personally, I hope to be back with the city help this month, and I respect the fact that you are understanding why I'm wearing a mask, because I was back in the hospital again. Might as well, it's not COVID. Amen, I'm lucky. And surely, city-county health board is very active. Next time you have a meeting, come join it. It's very enlightening. It makes this thing look very passive. That's my report.
Thank you. Cemetery Committee, Mattson here, Bill or Don?
No meeting, no report.
Parks Committee, Mr. Ork?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Before the council is the minutes from the August 26th meeting... Yes, Mr. Mayor, before the council is the minutes from the August 26th meeting?
Love to approve.
Second.
Good move by Dan, second by Russ, discussion?
Call for the question?
Questions been called for to approve the August 26th, 2020 regular meeting of the Parks Committee. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed say nay? I take that as unanimous? Anything else you want to talk on that?
Um, no.
Okay, thank you. City Hall Committee, Mr. Graham?
No meeting, no report, but the City Hall Committee or the table for the festival we had downtown. We actually have some tickets for sale. We invite everybody to come City Hall and buy a $10 chance on a draw. There's some great prizes. The drawing will be held sometime around the Christmas stroll. I'm not too sure if it'll be that night or Monday morning on the radio or. But there's some great prizes, only $10 a chance, so come down and everybody buy $100 worth of it. The building, building, fun. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
It's been a while since we've had a City Hall Committee meeting and the last one was canceled. When is the next one scheduled?
I think they're on the third Thursday of the month, yeah. But usually if it is, it's.
And we had moved that around a little bit, but canceled it, so. Is it still scheduled for the third Thursday?
It's scheduled as long as we actually have something to schedule it with. We have a ghost. Because you're still on the zoo.
Very sneaky, buddy.
What's my name tonight? But usually what happens on the agendas and the meetings is if I ask God, I ask around to different department heads and if there isn't any items that I know, and if nobody's told me any items on the agenda, I don't just have a meeting and have a meeting if I don't have anything put on the agenda. And that's why the City Hall meeting was not done.
Well, I was just surprised because we haven't had a meeting since the city history days. And so I thought we'd have a meeting to review the results.
Okay, I can do that.
Could we have a report on the Dylan Days?
I can do that City Hall meeting and then that will go through the minutes and then that will be in that one.
Great.
Okay. Then we will have one the third Thursday of this month, whatever. Seventeenth. Seventeenth, right after the next council meeting, or the day after the next council meeting.
I was hoping, Mr. Mayor, that we would have some kind of report that included not just the goal of the Dylan Days was to bring everybody together and make a little money for the City Hall. So not only a report on making a little money, but we spent some time on looking at things that would go up for auction. And then also, the, one of the goals was to bring people together to talk about history. And at least I put some money in and put some time and effort in into creating a display. And so I would like to have a report on what the numbers were, or approximate numbers of people who participated in the different events. Just so I can see if next year is it worthwhile to put that kind of time and money into something? Or should we not?
Okay. Yep. Screen Alley Committee, Mr. Nye?
Yes, we don't have any minutes, but we do have two action items to do. One of them is to approve this Montana South and Reader intersection. Eliminating two of the parking spaces on the east side of Reader and on the westbound traffic. And put yellow concrete parking blocks to stop possible parking. This is something that we came up with instead of putting a stop sign there because if we put one there, then do we need to put one on the other side? We felt that we'll try this first because there is a site problem on that corner. And people tend to park there, so what we're gonna do is the existing sidewalk is, only comes out a little ways. What we're gonna do is put these blocks out to where it, to the edge of the street and back to where the first door goes in the side there. And that will be the no parking zone, period. So hopefully it opens up the view for people to stop there in Montana wanting to turn.
Love to approve. Second.
Good move by Russ, second by Bill, any further discussion on it? Mr. Nye, did you get the Chief's report on that?
Yes.
It was in the packet, or not in the packet, in the minutes of last meeting. So he can report again today if he wants. I think he was part of the great chief of this solution?
Yeah, it was, and I think that's a, that's a good idea.
Thank you. And I heard enough. Oh, sorry. Okay, Rich?
I'd just like to say thank you to our Swedish citizen for initially pointing us out.
Okay, so noted. Mary Jo, I think you had a question or?
I read the, the street alley, all of the packet that came down. I didn't quite understand, did you get input from the person who owns that property?
No.
I was, okay. They had some concerns about it, I think. And I did ask them to come to the city and speak to you about it.
On this subject, didn't really ask, it has to do with safety. And we looked and we tried to come up with any other ways besides doing that. And the Chief did come up with, the committee didn't come, there really, this is probably one of the only, besides a lot of stop signs. That was the only ways to make everybody stop. So they said it like, like Dan said, this is a trial, might not work. You might have to go to stop signs to make it better.
I'm still trying to figure, I mean, I know that we changed the stop sign like five years ago or 10 years ago, but I'm still not used to that change. So I agree with you, stop signs would be relevant.
Well, I would like to, the walk is a good idea. It'll help the site problems coming on Montana Street. But the biggest problem is, I'm down there early morning, I have breakfast down there walking across the street. These three days a week almost get run over because people come down Reader Street. Auto business is way too fast to make in that corner. By the time they see you're there, the path to the tarver's curb has already placed. I think that at the least a yield sign there would maybe slow down a bit enough. Because I don't think they care if they can see around that corner. They're so used to making that corner at 30 miles an hour where they can see you're an object. Really don't make any difference at all.
Now this, they're going west. They're going, coming from the west going, or excuse me, coming from the east going west. Down Reader Street, you know, they're coming, might as well come this way and then you watch and they come around that corner.
Well, there's a stop sign at the block right before that.
Well, I suspect they're not making it either. I don't know.
Some people stop at stop signs.
What's that?
Chief? There are some people that don't stop at stop signs.
Yeah, well, the night picture is so much better. And I think that with those, with the van moved back, with the parking spots moved back, I think the site picture will be a lot better, so I think it will help that, Raymond. And I'm not opposed to a yield sign either, as we discussed. And I think it's, might be a good idea to, on a trial basis, to see if this does work as a lesson basis.
May I, and I asked the suggestion for a yield sign? What would they be yielding to?
Well, yield sign you slow down to, correctly if I'm wrong, to 15 miles an hour or 5 miles an hour. I don't remember now what it was, make sure I'm right. But Chief, no, that, but you're supposed to slow down at a yield sign, whether you're there or not.
Well, my, my understanding of yield is that uncontrolled intersections, in terms of that direction of traffic, they're supposed to yield to the opposing traffic. Is that correct, Chief?
It, it is, but there's a stop sign on the other side. So with a stop sign on their side, the yield sign just has to yield to the eastbound. And so that'd be a big, you know, workout.
Well, there, there's no stop sign eastbound on Reader.
That's what I'm saying, but the ones that are right at them wouldn't have, because it's on Montana Street. So they wouldn't have to yield to that, they would have to yield just to the eastbound of the traffic. So that's why we decided that it was probably best because it would throw a monkey wrench into that whole corner if we tried this first before we started trying to reinvent that whole corner on the, on the traffic. And I think this will work.
Something I can do is work with the currency. If we have any slow signs to get people's attention, is a possibility. There's a slow children's sign there to help bring them get across the street. Sorry, we were hoping in the venue, anyway, with that. Oh, you didn't.
Hey, Chief, what happens with some of these intersections where they put the grooves in the highway across the, when in traffic? Does that have any effect as far as getting people's attention?
Yeah, for about the first three times that you drive by it, it becomes normal, you know. But I don't know, those engineers and stuff, they probably have a lot more, obviously have a lot more experience. And some of that, kind of those traffic engineers and stuff, that, I think in this case, we didn't, I mean, we weren't going to go that specific in, on that route. If we could do it something like this first, and correctly if I'm wrong, I think that's, that's kind of how I, I play it. We're going to do the least, sometimes less is more and see if it works, just to, you know, deal with something that's really drastic.
Thank you. Call for the question. Questions been called for to approve for at the Montana South and the Reader intersection to eliminate the two parking spaces on the east side of Reader on the westbound traffic part and put some yellow concrete parking blocks to stop the possibility of parking there. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed say nay? Unanimous? We'll probably get started on it next week, I think, sometime. Because they're pretty full this week on painting and that, otherwise we'd go do it right now. We'll get it next week, we'll get that.
Okay, the other action item is to install a stop sign on the right, right way of Tobacco Route and Ramshorn intersection. Northbound traffic on Tobacco Route and install white paint. To delineate stopping locations.
Move to approve, second. Good move by Bill, second by Russ, discussion?
And the reason we looked at this is, I don't know how many people have been on that, but it's a weird angle. Also, we got a hedge that sits there. We also have a lot of, and I'm assuming they're with Miller &amp; Sons people or people maybe visiting their office, they park right there on that corner. And you cannot see another vehicle coming. And so we thought for safety reasons, we need to put a stop sign in. And Chief Guyerson did go out and do a study, or he and Officer Alvarez looked at it and frankly, if I'm wrong, agreed that maybe a stop sign should be put there.
Yeah, I live out there, did it, and we, it's weird because the way that the, the road just, it's just weird because of the sidewalk kind of angles. And so I'm not really sure how that, that came about, but it is really difficult. I've not noticed it for quite some time, but it seems like it's getting worse or maybe we're seeing more traffic down that way. I don't know, but yeah, I think there's definitely a need for it. And I don't like stop signs, but I think there is a need for safety there.
Is there some way we can square that corner up? It was a weird angle.
As we were gonna look into is, I haven't had the time, I was gonna try to dig up the plaque and see exactly how was that created. Could be that the city's using part of it as a street and it's not really our property. So I was gonna look into where our property go, it might actually widen out, they gave it to us, don't know. So I was gonna dig that up and see what we got and then we're gonna, that was what the paint was gonna do, is try to delineate. This is city, this is the city street kind of thing. So. I'm just saying that might help, help the intersection become safer intersection.
That's what I think part of the discussion was to. Thank you. Call for the question. Questions we called for to install a stop sign on the City Right Way, the Tobacco Route and Ramshorn intersection for the northbound traffic on Tobacco Route and install some white paint to delineate the stopping location. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed say nay? I take that as unanimous? Anything else, Dan?
No, that concludes my report. Thank you.
Don, Water and Sewer Committee?
Uh, we, we did have a meeting, but there are minutes at this time, so we'll get it next month. Let us know, it worked. And I wasn't going to have a meeting next Tuesday. I don't really have much on the agenda. And the stuff that I was supposed to dig up, I didn't have a chance to get it all dug up yet. Okay, so, okay.
Sounds good. Thank you. Okay. Public comment on items of significant public interest not on the agenda within the jurisdiction of the city?
Uh, something I forgot in my report is that the Pioneer Meadows crew was asked for Walma Street to be closed on Tuesday and Wednesday so they can put in the sewer line and some work on the water line. Doesn't the sewer go down the alley?
Do they have to close the whole street, the trees, maybe it's half of it?
They're good, for safety reasons, they want to close all of it.
They want to keep it closed?
Is it just on that block?
Yeah, it's just on that block. It'd be between Harrington and Monroe.
How are you gonna detour traffic around that?
Wherever the other people go. They would, they would come down.
Vine.
Vine. Come down Harrington, loop around.
And I take it they're gonna put signs that direct the traffic, like detour or whatever?
Yeah, Jason and I worked with them to do that. And then also, we're gonna do a PSA, do it in Mo Max paper and then also on the radio. This is a heads up.
And then common courtesy, contact the bus barn? Because the bus that does go there, there's the two stops, then the two stops. Just so they can with those kids the first day of school.
But the bus, if the school buses aren't running in town, I think it will be going in two days. Anything else through there? Yeah, they come down, I, I am right across. They probably come down, not picking up city people, but coming down from Highway 41, they probably go that way to go to the grade school. Just saying, I don't know for sure.
But they race across there.
Any other public comments?
Hello, Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Uh, once again, uh, and follow up to my other verbal requests and written requests, I hereby claim my, under the provisions of Americans with Disabilities Act, ADA reasonable accommodation provisions for continued use of Zoom for City Council meetings and also committee meetings.
Thank you for your public comment. Any others?
And I'd like, so, so noted in the remarks, please.
It is so noted. Move for a general second. Okay, it was done, made motion and Russ second. All those in. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Make an adjournment. Thank you, everyone.